Please rise for the Budget of Allegiance. Mrs. Vento, roll call please.
Mrs. Caldwell?
Here.
Mr. Calella?
Here.
Mr. Daldel?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mrs. Rossler?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Schlock?
Here.
And Mr. Zuko?
Here.
Thank you.
The Board met in executive session on October 4th, 18th, and this evening, October 25th, to discuss matters of student confidentiality, personnel negotiations, and real estate.
Approve of the minutes, recommend approval of the following meeting minutes, September 27, 2016, regular board meeting in October 18, 2016, Committee of the whole.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'd like to welcome any citizens to come forward to discuss comments on agenda items.
Dave Wise, 425 Vale. Alright, thanks for the opportunity to speak. There's so many items that need address. I wanted to start with Dr. Glasspool. When you arrived here at Plum, I was impressed with your goals, forward thinking, and common sense. I applaud this, but I think your education and ideas were ignored by the Board. Your lack of follow-through with the sexual assault cases was a huge lapse in judgment that left Plum students vulnerable and some victims. In any other job, you would have been fired. In my opinion, you should have been removed, but I also think you're being made a scapegoat as other employees, both elected and hired, were aware and did as little as possible, if not turn a blind eye. In any case, you're here, and I hope you know that every decision you make or don't will be scrutinized. I have a ten-year-old daughter here in Plum that I expect to be protected above all else while here. To this whole vacancy position, I'm glad Mr. Calella recognizes that things are stated in frustration, like Ms. Stepnick's resigning. Now it seems that this Board, nor its legal counsel, have a policy on a Board member rescinding their resignation. There is however, a policy on accepting a resignation. The resignation must be accepted by a vote. To my knowledge, that vote hasn't happened, as such, it would seem that she is still a Board member. To that end, this Board is a mess. You're creating a legacy of ineptitude with political agendas, partisan bickering, and standoffs, personal insults, and poor decisions. Note that I did not say on this list, acting in the best interest of Plum students. Clearly, you have the lone two Democrats, Mrs. Gallagher and Mrs. Stepnick. I do not always agree with them, but I do believe they are here and act on what is best for the students of Plum, more than any other motive. Then you have the old guard, Mr. Calella, Mr. Daldel, Mr. Zuko. Mr. Daldel, you waffled on the Regency project, and I've challenged you to step up as you became President, and that hasn't happened. Mr. Zuko? Once I heard you speak, that the cost to educate a special needs child was your reason for not wanting a new housing plan, and that that same plan would attract the wrong people, I not only have no respect for you, but no faith that you act in the interest of Plum students. Mr. Calella, you got elected espousing the benefits of neighborhood schools. You got elected and waffled. You suddenly decided that Plum needed to change in its educational model, a model that two new schools were just built on and a third was slated to be built. Plum was doing well. You cannot just jump at the next shiny object that catches your attention and pull Plum down with you. Yes, there are other educational models out there, but ours works, and this district has invested in our K-6 model, and our kids are doing well. You all need to look toward the future and follow the plan already in place, our successful K-6 model. To the new Board members, Mr. Rogers, Mrs. Caldwell, Mrs. Rossler, Mr. Schlock, brought in under the wing of Sal Calella. Wow, two days in office, and you crush plans and the financing for the third school with the K-6 model. You did this because, and you said this at my front door, you had viable options, and because taxes would go up if you built the school. The truth is, taxes were going to go up anyhow, and they did. And new school still needs built, and you, ten and a half months later, still have no plans. On top of all of this, is the detestable loathing this Board has for each other. It is embarrassing and shameful. Some of you would rather not vote for something solely because someone else on the Board you don't like is in favor of that item. You're putting your selfishness, personal quarrels, and your own politics before what you're actually here to do, which is what's best for Plum students. Which brings me to this construction project. I will say that this was voted for and approved over one and a half years ago. Monies were spent on planning and site preparation. Initial funds were borrowed, all with the idea to build another K-6 elementary school in Plum, the new Regency. Ten and a half months later, more money has been spent. Town hall meetings have been had, and numerous options have been presented. We know Mr. Schlock only wants to spend what is left of the Regency money to build anything new. Realistically, five million won't build anything. Ms. Caldwell wants, for what I assume are personal reasons, a new school in the northern part of Plum. Mr. Rogers will side with the old guard, and Ms. Rossler will side with her elected... Excuse me?
No, go ahead.
Yeah. And Ms. Rossler will side with her elected cohorts. And we know through past actions, that all but two members will do anything except build a new Regency, and that is the shame of this Board. You would rather spend fifteen million for only an addition to a fifty-year-old building built on a Nike missile silo site than have a new school for Plum students. VEBH Architects has said that you will see an additional cost associated with ripping into an old building, as well as bringing the building up to code for ADA repairs. That's four million dollars on top of everything else. With this O Block choice, Plum will lose a football field, traffic and congestion on an already congested campus will increase, available parking will decrease, construction will disrupt education of the students. There may be health-related issues as fifty-year-old materials become airborne. This choice upsets the whole educational model of the district that the two most recent schools were just built on. You will need to again redistrict. You will not have room for specials, the gym and cafeteria will be too small, you will have an art on a cart, and Plum will have little room for growth. And yes, Plum is growing, and you need to plan for this fact. And don't forget that you need to build and pay for another entrance-exit from this school into the neighborhood, and that the addition, and with that addition, water runoff into the neighborhood also becomes an issue of cost and practicality. Or for a few dollars more, but with no surprises, you can have a brand-new school. There will be no health issues, no educational disruptions, no redistricting. Plum will save money on busing, there will be room for growth in Plum. No new exits to build or pay for, no new runoff issues, you will have adequate cafeteria and gym spaces. You will have room for STEM labs, libraries, and art. Basically, you will have an investment to be proud of, something done for the right reasons, a legacy here at Plum. But political agendas, bipartisan bickering, personal attacks and vendettas will stand in the way of you doing what is right, unless you choose to take the responsibility of the Board seat you were given and actually do what is in the best interest of our students, and that is to build the new Regency. Thank you for your time.
Any other citizens' comments on agenda items? Okay, about non-agenda items?
Hi, Amy Wetmore, 834 Unity Center Road. I'm here tonight because there have been some articles running in a local newspaper about the Board. I can only assume either Board members are reaching out to media, or the media knows the right Board members to reach to. And the things that are being discussed in the media, and I'm sure most of the people here tonight are aware, asking for a revote because members were absent, even though that was within policy. It's gotta stop, guys. It has to end. It doesn't... Where I work, we work with a lot of parents who have children with special needs, and those parents come to us, and they ask why. How did we get here? Why are we dealing with what we're dealing with? And our response is, you can't focus on how you got here, you have to accept where you are and move forward. If you don't move forward as a Board and take the lead for this community, we will never heal, and our children will never, ever be able to say that they are proud to have come from Plum Borough and graduated from our schools. So, think twice before you make the phone call to the media, or comment to the media when they call you, because it reflects not only on you as an individual, but on this community as a whole.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments on non-agenda items?
My name is Karen Ogilvieva, 500 Rep Road. I have a question and then several comments. First of all, I don't understand why two Board members were absent for the vote to bring the Superintendent back. Nothing other than a serious accident or illness should have kept you from being here during this critical vote. A vote of this importance should have required all Board members to be here. It's that simple. As an elected official, you had a duty to be in attendance and submit a public vote. Not being here was a ploy to get out of voting publicly, and that is completely unacceptable. To me, that is a neglect of duty, and you should be forced to resign. But since we all know that won't happen, you should step down on your own. You chose this position for the good and the bad, regardless. If you can't handle it, quit. And if you quit, don't manipulate the remaining Board members or the public in an effort to obtain sympathy. The fact remains that by not being here, you chose to hide instead of standing up for our children and doing what was right for these victims. I also want to address the fact, during a recent Board meeting, that Jim Rogers stated that the public bullied him into making a decision against the Superintendent. When one of our kids is bullied in school, it doesn't seem to matter very much. They get bullied anyways, nothing's done about it. And number two, you're an adult. As a Board member, you can't be bullied by public opinion. Public opinion is why you're here. You were chosen to stand for the students, not yourself, and not your own agenda. So really, the only reason that you could be bullied would be if you were serving on this Board for yourself. And if that's the case, then you need to resign and let someone else, who actually gives a damn about our students, take your place. To me, it really comes down to accountability and doing what is right. For way too many years, the persons in power have looked the other way. It's time to face the facts, facts that a grand jury found, with documented evidence, testimony given under oath, stating that this administration protects its own instead of our innocent victims. It's time to be accountable to justice and honesty, not corruption and greed. It's time to stand for the future of our students. For those of you on this Board that do stand for the students, thank you for your service. It means the world, I'm sure, to them and to me. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments on non-agenda items? Okay, Dr. Glasspool, agenda please.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Rich Zuko Chair, recommend approval to pay the GOB invoices as presented.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval of the resolution amending the Bus Depot Plan of Lots as presented.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to renovate, expand O Block Junior High School based on Option 4C as presented, and negotiate contracts with VEBH and P.A. Soul and Rock for design development.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, at our open meeting last night, we discussed that we were going to hold off on this for a week or two until everyone could be brought up to par with Mr. Zohorecz's presentation on the budget and how the project would impact the finance of the future going forward, as well as integrating the possibility of a new Board member in making that decision. So, we had discussed last night, holding off on this, I'm not sure. We discussed removing it from the agenda, I'm not sure why it's still on the agenda tonight.
Can I talk to John, it's gonna negatively impact significantly the budget going forward? It's already looked bad now, the budget. If we borrow all this money, plus any extra maintenance costs when we start building, I mean, we're adding more debt, borrowing more money we don't have, I think we're putting the district at serious financial risk.
Did he not state at the last meeting, the standard in force, if we would borrow, the rating would drop, we wouldn't have a high interest rate to borrow in the future, and possibly could not get any loans in the future? You know, the district is in bad shape right now. There's a chance the state can take us over if we continue to borrow. So, I just would ask the Board hold off until we can come up with a plan, a strategic plan on how to pay for it. I think that's something that we've missed in the last, almost a year.
We discussed this last night, I'm not sure, why even sure it's on the agenda?
Well, I agree with that.
Everyone, it was a public meeting, Board members were present, we discussed that this would be removed from the agenda. We have to hear Mr. Zohorecz's presentation. I'm not, why is it still on the agenda? Can anyone answer to that?
We have four out of eight, that's not majority.
Four out of eight is not a majority to move this forward. It shouldn't be on the agenda from the get-go. Four out of eight is not a majority.
That was just moving it forward like any other committee.
But to move it out of committee, you have to have a majority to move it forward to the voting meeting.
Three people voted to move it forward.
Three out of eight? That's not a majority. It shouldn't even be on the agenda.
I think that, I think it was four people for Option 4C, I'm going from memory, three people for the addition on the center, and then one person for the new Regency Park.
There were three for Pickbeck, with the possible compromise to center.
So, three voted for nothing? Well, I guess you can just vote to not accept it or to move it forward. I mean, that would be my suggestion at this point.
Unless you want to table it.
Table it. Make a motion to table?
Second.
With a motion and a second, to table the motion, any discussion on...
There's no discussion on table.
Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Vento? Mrs. Vento? Correct. Vicki?
Mrs. Gallagher?
Uh, this is motion to table, yes.
Mrs. Rossler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Schlock?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
No.
Mrs. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Calella?
No.
Mr. Daldel?
Uh, no.
Motion passes to table.
Item four, recommend approval to move forward with change order from D'Agostino Electronics Services for additional cameras per attachment.
On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation also?
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have discussion. Can you explain what these are for, Rich?
That was for the additional cameras. We talked about this several times. It was an upgrade, I believe, and additions, because I think the cameras that we had didn't have all the capabilities, and they have a better vision, night vision thing, and they have to tie into the system that we had, but I think some of the old cameras and the new cameras weren't compatible.
Correct.
That's all I had.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Zuko will make a facilities report.
Okay, the best news we have, I guess, as far as facilities this month, is after two and a half years, I think we're finally getting the bus terminal, the new bus terminal finished. We've got all the meters in, we've got heat in the building, and I believe we passed the occupancy permit exam, whatever it is, test, and we should be hopefully getting that occupancy permit very soon. But I'll be happy when I see it in our hands, so that's always an iffy thing. The item, item two, I believe it was, for the Bus Depot Plan, that is for possible separation of those plans and the cell, that other property. So, that was what that was. But basically, we have the new facility almost ready, and we're going to be moving into it in the near future, and we're gonna have to do it probably on a weekend or something where we have no disruption of bus service, interruption of our transportation facility itself. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes.
Okay. And that's about it for this month, thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Mr. Steve Schlock Chair, recommend approval to hire Adam Zarmak as Plum High School Assistant Principal effective immediately in appointing Adam Zarmak as Assistant Principal at O Block Junior High and Holiday Park Elementary School, commencing with the 2017-18 school year at a salary of eighty-nine thousand dollars. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion?
No, just thanks to Adam for stepping up and helping out at the high school.
He's done a good job at the high school so far as acting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to advertise an RFP for accounting services at twenty hours per week. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just one thing, just in case everybody doesn't know what an RFP is, would you please explain it?
It's a request for proposals.
I know that, but I mean...
Yeah.
It's a request for proposals.
That's all it is. It's an inquiry.
Get a price for what they charge.
So, anytime in any of these items, no matter what committee it is, when you see the RFP, that's what it is. It's a request for information and cost.
Thanks for pointing that out. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to create advertising interview for the full-time employee position of transportation dispatcher and router. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to advertise interview for two vacant part-time employee technician positions. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to create two vacant parent-professional positions, high school nurse office and Center Elementary School. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept retirement of Debbie Gianta, Administrative Assistant at Holiday Park Elementary School, effective the end of her shift on December 1, 2016. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval under the terms of the Act 93 Cook Managers Agreement to move Donna Grazinger to Plum Senior High School effective October 11, 2016, at a prorated salary of thirty thousand, two hundred, twenty-three dollars and twenty cents. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? I'm assuming it's retroactive?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Louis Thon, long-term substitute social studies teacher for the second semester of the 2016-17 school year. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Ronaldo Toll, substitute bus driver, effective October 26, 2016, at the contracted rate. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Lena D'Amico, substitute bus aide, effective October 26, 2016, at the contracted rate. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to amend the hire date of Natalie Flanagan, food service worker at Plum High School, to October 12, 2016. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Rob Van Ren, substitute bus driver, at the contracted rate, effective October 26, 2016. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend an intermittent leave in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act for Kara Polarski for the 2016-17 school year. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend a leave in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act for Audrey Pettie, retroactive to October 12, 2016, through November 18, 2016, and then intermittently through the end of the 2016-17 school year. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to amend the September 27, 2016 motion to hire Joseph Riddle as a bus driver to read substitute bus driver. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following leaves for Michelle Corna, Jaclyn Beersford, Jessica Pilik, Ryan Kenneth, J.R. Pilik, Norm McGregor, Denise Guerrero, as listed. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Education Committee, Mrs. Sue Caldwell Chair, recommend approval of the following overnight field trip conferences requests, as listed.
On behalf of the Committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval, accept the agreement for Penn State Homework Hotline as presented.
On behalf of the Committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Maybe Dr. Glasspool just tell the community a little bit about it. It's a really great program. Sounds interesting.
Sure, it's a program where students who need specific help with homework can contact students at Penn State New Kensington for additional assistance, and that's at no cost to the families.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept revised agreement with Keystone Educational Consulting Group, LLC, as presented, pending solicitor approval.
On behalf of the Committee, I'll make that recommendation. Go ahead, Mr. Price.
I just wanted to let you know that I've already made a change to it, otherwise it's fine to go.
It was accepted by Keystone Education Consulting Group as well.
Okay, great. On behalf of the Committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion?
Maybe just tell the public what the Keystone Educational Consulting Group does for us.
The Keystone Educational Consulting Group had a ninety-day contract to provide special education support services at the Administrative Central Office position. That contract was rewritten to read for thirty hours a week for the remainder of the school year, so Keystone Education Consulting Group will be here through June 30, 2016, I'm sorry, 17.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to amend the September 27 Board motion for the start date of the varsity baseball overnight field trip to Florida from March 23 to March 22, 2017.
On behalf of the Committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mrs. Caldwell will make the education report.
Thanks, Dr. Glasspool. Just briefly, our PSSA scores came in this month since our last meeting. We've made many positive strides in our scoring, so I think it's a testament to our We've made many positive strides in our scoring, so I think it's a testament to our administration and the great educators and paraprofessionals in our district. Many, many hours and much planning goes into it. And of course, the hands-on day-to-day with our students, with our educators and paraprofessionals. So thanks, Dr. Glasspool, for your leadership on that. And of course, we had Dr. Rossi with us throughout that as well. So look forward to future strides in the same area. And Dr. Glasspool will be getting them up through our IT department on the website, correct?
We'll put those up on the website in the near future.
Great, thank you.
May I make just one comment?
Sure.
I agree with everything Sue said, but what people, I hope you understand, this does not happen overnight. The programs, the initiatives that were done that made all these increases in scores possible was stuff that was begun a year, two years ago. So I'd like to see it continue, and I think Dr. Rossi's statement was that, yes, it's still gonna take effort to maintain those scores. But I think Plum did a very, very good job in the last couple of years to get these scores up to that point.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
I have to commend the teachers. I mean, this is definitely reverse of the teachers' work, so congratulations to the teachers. And when you look at these scores, they are significantly higher than state averages. So they are, it's a job well done.
Finance Committee, Mr. Sal Collet, Chair. Delinquent real estate taxes received from management price for September, total collected ninety thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Recommend approval of Treasury report and bill payments for September, 2016, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the October budget transfers, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval for the elected tax collector per Act 164, 2014, to appoint Lisa A. Lagnese as his deputy tax collector in the event that the elected tax collector would be unable, would become incapacitated.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Price, can you make any comment about that with the deputy taxpayer, how we got to that?
Well, the tax collector can deputize and have a deputy tax collector for various reasons. But under a new law that was recently, well, I should say an old law that was recently amended, the elected tax collector is required to designate somebody in the event of incapacity so that the tax collections keep on going smoothly. And the school district has to get our consent for the person he is choosing.
Okay.
Is there any additional cost to the taxpayer?
No.
Yeah, okay.
No, remember, the tax collector is an elected office on a fee that is set prior to the election. And however the tax collector chooses to do collection is up to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to add an activity account for the Horizons Club at Plum Senior High School.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What is the Horizons Club? Anyone know?
Gonna have to defer to somebody else.
It was something with a... Yeah, it was with a high school student. I was trying to look for it. I know it was on our BMX. It was with something to do with water, with the African... Philanthropy, yeah.
I know it's philanthropy.
Trying to find, to read it out loud.
The agenda states O Block?
No, it's Plum High School.
But it is the high school, just to clarify.
I could readily find it.
Primarily for rural water well projects via the Africa Hartwood Project Organization. Raising money to donate towards philanthropic causes. The raising money toward, what is it? When I guess they're requesting an activity account to deposit and to withdraw money for the Horizons Club. I don't understand about the Horizons Club.
All right.
Great.
Student service organization. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Collet will make a finance report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. Just a couple of brief things. Mr. Zhorcheck is hard at work preparing his budget packet for next year. Along with doing that, he is finalizing our interaction with Mr. Coombs, our auditor, to look at our annual financial report, which is due John, October thirtieth, I believe, to the state, with a thirty-day extension potentially, if we need that. That's an integral part of the budgeting process, so John's working hard on that. In addition to that, we did, we will receive some Plan Con monies. John, may you just make a comment about that?
Certainly, certainly. The state issued a statement about a week ago about the timing. They're looking at the Plan Con package and taking out debt service in order to fund school districts for what was owed in fifteen, sixteen school year. So we've made three payments to date that have not been reimbursed. Two payments in the fifteen, sixteen school year and one payment this current school year. So we'll be reimbursed based on our current schedule. They're telling us the reimbursement will be prior to the Thanksgiving break. So that's a very specific timeline, so I'm encouraged by that, and I think it's gonna come.
About how much money, John?
Well, it would be about eight hundred thousand dollars for the fifteen, sixteen school year, and a little bit more than that for the sixteen, seventeen school year. But we have the one final payment to make in March before we could collect that total of eight hundred thousand dollars for the sixteen, seventeen school year. So about one point six to one point seven million dollars. And that money, I think out of that one point seven million dollars, we had one point two million dollars budgeted, so we'll outperform the budget for the sixteen, seventeen school year, so that's an encouraging sign.
It is. Thanks, John.
And I did want to read what Dr. Machoni did send us as a board. He said that the Horizons Club will be raising money to donate toward philanthropic causes, primarily for rural water well projects via the Africa Hartwood Project Organization.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Mrs. Vicky Ross, Chair. Mrs. Ross will make this report.
All I have is a report. Next month, we're gonna take a look at hazing. We're gonna look at the classroom policy and also revisit policy eight twenty-four. That's all.
Thank you. Safe and supportive schools committee, Mrs. Ross, Chair. Mrs. Ross will make this report.
We also have a safety coordinator position that the board discussed. It looks like we're gonna move that forward and post it in November. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that it actually gets posted and we find a qualified candidate for that position. Also, the board's gonna be doing things a little bit differently this year with the citizen safety committee. We are pushing for more community involvement. This year, we're gonna hold three meetings. Tentatively, these meetings we held in November, January, and March, the board agreed to address topics on heroin, bullying, and suicide. We will have a guest speaker and questions-and-answer sessions for the community. More information will be posted on the district website.
Thank you. Transportation Committee, Mr. Jim Rogers, Chair. There'll be no report this evening. Athletic Committee, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, Chair. Recommend approval to hire the fallen coaches for the 2016-17 season at the contracted rate, as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mrs. Gallagher will make a athletic committee report.
Yes. First, I would like to offer our sincere condolences to our coach Lorenzo Freeman and his family. And our most heartfelt thoughts go out to all of our football team in, you know, in dealing with this tragedy. I know that it wasn't something easy to deal with. I applaud the efforts of our administrative team, Mr. Alpino, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Wolf. I know, Dr. Glasspool, he had something to do with this as well in bringing the team together. I know there's been positive feedback from a lot of the team and their parents and just thanking us and how much they appreciated that they made arrangements so that the boys could be together to go to the funeral for Mr. Freeman. And just showing the support and, you know, our guidance department and having the grief counselors on staff for our students. So I just wanna thank our administration on that and just offer our sincere condolences to the Freeman family. So on another note, Mr. Alpino would like to remind everybody that registration for winter sports is open in the family ID site, so I stress this every month, you know, we're going into the winter sports. The registration link is on our website with athletic physicals page on the district website. We will be conducting sports physicals on Thursday, November third. And the junior high as well, at the high school and the junior high. Dr. Rossi, our staff doctor, will be conducting those. And there's no cost for those physicals, but sections five and six should be filled out from the parent and completed and returned to the school's nurse in advance. Winter sports include basketball, bowling, rifle, swimming, and wrestling. I want to give out a big congratulations to our girls soccer team on claiming the co-section championship. This was their first section title since nineteen eighty-eight, so I'm very proud of our girls in bringing home that co-section championship.
Thank you.
And I wanted to mention too, starting next month, that we are gonna be recognizing our fall teams during the student feature portion of our meetings. You know, a lot of the after-all-section teams will be announced next month.
Question, is our football team on a winning streak?
We are.
Did they run two in a row?
We are.
So let's root for them for the weekend.
Good chance to beat Fox Chapel this week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two for them. Okay, thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna have the vacant school board appointment conversation. Board members can make nominations.
I'm gonna make a motion to open nominations.
I'd like to nominate Scott Coulson.
Second?
Nominations don't need a second.
Okay.
Okay.
If there are no further nominations, you would do a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations? Does that need a second, Lee?
That's a second.
Second?
Motion is second to close nominations. That require a vote?
Voice vote.
Yeah. All those in favor, close nominations, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have a vote to appoint Mr. Coulson on the school board.
Is there discussion?
Yes, you can have a discussion.
Yeah, the motion to appoint him.
I would just thank everyone who was interested. It was a tough choice. Everyone was well-qualified and appreciate everyone showing their interest.
I have a question though. Since we're voting on this new board member tonight, is this over? Or is there a chance the board member that quit can do something to overrule this decision and go to court?
Yes, there's a chance that that could happen.
And if that happens, can the community, members of the community also apply for the position if she opens that door in front of a judge?
Well, it would be an issue as to whether or not the position is truly vacant. Right now, you are filling it within the thirty-day period, so that part of it would no longer be relevant. If it would go there, the Court of Common Pleas would decide if there is a true vacancy or not. If the judge decides there was a vacancy and resignation, then the person you're reporting tonight would continue to maintain that chair.
I had no way to tell beforehand either what they would do.
No.
I'd say it's pure speculation. We just move on. We need to move the district forward.
Just want to point out, this is about a thirteen-month position. It'll terminate at the end of November, 2017.
First Monday in December.
First Monday in December, okay.
Next September.
Next September, 2017. So it's a little over a year.
I have one more question. Would we be notified when that happens, if she would go downtown? How soon?
If it happens, the school district would receive notice of that, yes.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Coulson.
And that would be a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rossler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
No.
Mr. Schlock?
Yes.
Mr. Zucco? Mrs. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Calella?
No.
Mr. Valdell?
No.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
That fails.
So four is not a majority of eight. Just to clarify what was stated earlier in this meeting.
You have to have five affirmative votes, no matter...
Thank you.
How many people are present.
So how does, now what happens, Lee?
You can entertain new nominations. If you don't, your time period for filling the vacancy would be running in approximately two days.
So then any citizen with a petition of ten taxpayers?
Ten resident taxpayers could file petition requesting the court to fill the position.
I'm disappointed in the board. We had an open discussion last night in an open meeting, and there was, everyone was in agreement with moving Scott forward. Once again, this board's embarrassing itself.
And how did that happen? How did we walk out the door and it was unanimous?
We walked out the door last evening.
And then all of a sudden, we came here.
Went home, and now four board members disagree with what all eight of us agreed to last night.
How does that happen?
In a public meeting.
Not one person, four people did.
You have an explanation for why you changed your mind.
But we had discussion last night.
You're an elected official, Mr. Zucco. You owe the public an explanation. It was a public meeting last night, so you don't, okay, well, at least you voted, at least you came. So elected officials, elected officials don't have to say why they do anything. But you did last night. Four board members changed their mind overnight. Overnight. From the public meeting last evening. Interesting. This is not, I would say disappointing.
Disappointing.
Very disappointing.
It's actually pathetic.
This community needs to move on. You hear it time and time again from the public, but the board can't bring themselves to stick with the decision.
It was unanimous last night.
Within twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
It was unanimous.
Agenda's changed in twenty-four hours, Sue, you know that.
I do see it.
People put things on the agenda at the last minute, make motions. So you know that, hence last month.
Hence last month. Michelle, would you like to state to the community of why you weren't here? Michelle? Intergovernmental Committee?
You can always make more nominations.
Any other nominations?
No. We closed nominations. Nominations were closed. I don't think we're...
The vote failed. You can always present another nomination.
I have no other candidate. We decided last night, all eight of us. If you think you're gonna get eight people to agree on another name on a nomination, I think you're sorely mistaken.
Okay. Move on then.
Intergovernmental Committee, Mrs. Susan Caldwell, Chair. Mrs. Caldwell will make a report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. We met and we did work in conjunction with the borough. And just so the community is aware, we will, the borough will be posting numerous bus stops that were deemed dangerous for our students to be getting on and off of our buses. There'll be signage posted. I'm not sure of a timeframe on that, if we know. But Dr. Glasspool is gonna work with the IT staff to get those individual bus stops listed on our website as well. It's mainly gonna impact, I believe, parking at certain bus stops. We had cars parked too close to the bus stops, is my understanding, and it was dangerous for the children getting off and on the buses without having enough space to get to the side of the road with the cars parked there so that they could safely begin their walk home. So just be aware and watch for that in the coming near future. That's it.
Thank you. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, Mr. Jim Rogers, representative. Mr. Rogers will make this representative this evening.
Yes, we have a meeting with the Forbes...
Yes, we have a meeting with the Forbes panel next week, or Thursday, but just a couple of quick things. They are looking at a welding program. It will cost anywhere from $300,000 to $400,000 to get it started and run about $60,000 a year to be maintained. They're trying to determine exactly the best route to go with that. There are currently 664 students at the school. There's a leadership conference coming up, October 26 to 28, at Seven Springs. There'll be 21 students from Forbes in attendance, and there will be two of our Plum students will be there. The last thing, they've started the apprentice students program. There are 28 students from Forbes assigned to different companies around the area. Eight are from Plum. So fully a third of the group is from Plum who have, will be working for different types of industries, automotive, construction, mechanical, electric. It's everyone electric, so our kids are doing real well over there.
Thank you. Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, representative.
I just wanted to make one mention. I know I said I didn't have a report. Tomorrow, Thursday evening, is their open house at the Sunrise School, so I hope to attend Thursday's open house there.
Well, thanks for doing that.
President's report, Mr. Kevin Daldel. Mr. Daldel, make this report.
Thank you. Just real briefly, I want to reiterate what Mrs. Caldwell said about the PSSA scores. We're very pleased with the scores that we've seen this month exceeded the state and the county averages across the board. And I'd like to thank all the educators, students, and for their educational achievements. This shows that we're making progress in student achievement, and it sets the bar a little bit higher for the next year. I just want to congratulate everybody and keep up the good work. November is Lung Cancer Awareness Month, National Adoption Month, National Diabetes Month, National Novel Writing Month, and National American Heritage, Native American Heritage Month. Some upcoming dates to mark on your calendar. Of course, October 31 is Halloween. November 1 is the end of the nine weeks, so there'll be early dismissal. November 6 is the end of daylight savings time, so turn your clocks back one hour. Remember, fall back. November 8 is election day. There's no school, but there will be student conferences, or teacher conferences that day. And finally, November 23 through the 27 is the Thanksgiving break, and there'll be no school during that time. And for the quote of the month, please all and you'll please none, ASAP. Thank you.
Kevin, I have a comment. Can I comment on that? I just have a question. Last night when we left, the vote was unanimous, and Tim Glasspool was going to call Scott Coulson to notify him that he was going to be the candidate and he would have to be sworn in within two days. Could somebody explain what happened? And who called who? And who called him?
That's not my understanding. My understanding is we're going to wait for the vote, and I was going to call him Wednesday morning if he was the candidate. That's all I have to say about the vote. That's all, it's my understanding about who was going to contact the candidate.
I thought he was going to come here tonight after.
No, he's unavailable.
Announcements, discussion meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the 15th of November at 6:00 PM here in the Borough Council Chambers. The voting board meeting is scheduled for the 22nd at 7:00 PM here again in the Borough Council Chambers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.